I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under acceptance of the agenda, we have one change, and that is we will not have a communication on solarized CT program. Andy Bauer said he cannot participate in that program as its leader, so he's not coming tonight. He will be here next time to talk on the fracking waste. So that will likely be the second meeting in May, but he will not be here tonight. And with that, if there's a motion to approve the agenda?
Some.
As amended. As amended. Second by Kitch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is approval of the April 20, 2016 minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So much.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kitch. Any changes, errors, or omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Communications and correspondence, while we don't have the presentation from Andy, I do have information that I shared with the selectmen on the continuing information on the state budget. There was, we thought, a tentative budget late this afternoon, but as many of us have seen through emails and television, it is not going to be voted on tonight. So the legislature will likely adjourn their regular session without adopting a budget. But if you look just for a minute at the May 4th communication from Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and you compare that to the next page, which is what the governor had sent to us by way of CCM on April 13th. And you can scan and see the differences in the suggested numbers. So if you look at the adopted FY 17 on the May 4th, and you compare that to what the governor had recommended, you'll see the same for adult ed, or almost the same, it's a slight difference. Excuse me. Wait a minute. No. There's nothing, right? Governor, February FY 11 compared to Governor Revised FY 17. April, right. So is there zero there? Is that the, am I reading that right, for adult education? Or they've added back in 10-499, right, Tom? You don't have it in front of you. Okay. The next one, the ECS grant on the May 4th, 4-4-1-8-025. And what had been, under the governor's proposed April, was 4-2-3-7-9-7-6. So they've restored some of that.
And yet, this one this afternoon was not approved.
This is another draft. Correct, Kathy? Locep remains steady, pretty much. Pequat remains about the same, a little bit less in the one dated May. And pilot is a couple dollars difference. Town aid road is the same. Grants for municipal projects is the same. The municipal revenue sharing assistance is 192-715 in the draft dated May 4. In the draft dated April, we see 45-447. So some of that has been restored. So while there's some restoration, it's not 100 percent, and as I said, there's more to come. There is, on the third handout that I gave to you, some information on the municipal revenue sharing grants and what they include. They include potentially motor vehicle reimbursement, select payment in lieu of taxes, sales tax sharing, which is the majority of ours, council of government grants, and then the education cost sharing of which there's 10 million in FY 17 only. I believe that's for certain communities, not ours. So this is to give you a little bit of information about the MRSA grant. It has a lot of questions still regarding the estimates from these latest budgets. And all we were provided was a single amount to CCM for each town per MRSA. We don't know what's included in that figure. It's possible the amount that was provided doesn't include motor vehicle reimbursement or one of the other grants. Since motor vehicle reimbursement isn't new funding, it may not be included in the estimates you have. We're trying to get clarification on this and what is and is not included in the municipal revenue sharing account. So I'm trying to give you the information up to date. If we get more tomorrow, I'll be sure to share it with you by email. Any questions? So there's still an unknown at this point.
A lot of questions, but no answers.
Good point. And I will remind everyone that Monday, the 9th of May, is the annual budget referendum. Encourage everyone to vote on the budget, and it starts at 6:00 in the morning and it ends at 8:00 at night. How about comment? Tax suspense list. I have provided for you in your packets the tax suspense list. As usual, you don't always pass it on the first night, but if you're ready to pass it, you may, or we can put it on the next agenda. It's up to the selectmen. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it. Maybe next time. Next time. Okay. We'll put it on next time. Yes?
This list is only peoples that are, where we had returned mail, or we know that are dead. So we didn't go through the blanket like we used to in the past, which we, which you guys kind of seemed like you didn't like. So this is clearly just people that, the addresses come back unknown from the post office, or they're no longer alive.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comments or questions?
For any other municipalities, is there a procedure in place where you could track down some of the people, you know, with like?
That I don't know. Do you know, Tom? I don't. We do that for motor vehicles then, but for personal property and/or real estate, we typically do not. But these, as Tom said, were returned, address unknown. I know where one person was, so.
We probably each know one or two.
Right. No, I just didn't know if there was a procedure in play, even if it was a 50 percent fee of what they collect kind of thing.
CCM used to do that. They've dropped the program, and there are some collection agencies that do do that.
Tom, looks like you want to say.
We, you know, there was a, there was a firm that we were going to engage last year that I looked into. A very good firm out of Rhode Island that also practices in Connecticut with many municipalities. It's just that we went after heavy on the tax sale, we went heavy on water and sewer collections. It just didn't really seem the right time to pursue the personal property and the motor vehicle. Motor vehicle gets caught generally when they're trying to re-register their vehicles, if they do re-register. Again, these numbers are small relative to the total grand list. And the, you know, it just, it just didn't seem like the right time to pursue that. I can pursue that with Rossi and, you know, anytime we want to, but it just, you know, went after the tax sale, and I think that brought in a lot, lot more money, and was much more beneficial. I mean, when you look at some of the people that are on, a lot of things that are on there, it is, you know, businesses are defunct is where, that's your personal property that you're going to get. The motor vehicle stuff is, you know, you'll get it when they re-register, if they do re-register. A lot of times people play with their names, they have multiple names, so. Can be looked at, it just didn't seem to be the material item at the time.
Thank you. The next item that we have, number eight, is a resolution regarding calling cash bonds for completion of Courtney Lane. I'm going to do my best to explain to you a little bit about this situation. Courtney, sorry?
Before we get started?
Yes.
I just want to put something on the record, if anybody.
Okay.
I'm not sure I would need to recuse myself, but I do own property at the end of that street, and this is my access to that property. There's a bunch. So if somebody feels that'll be a conflict, I don't think that's going to sway my decision one way or another.
I don't think so.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
I would like to leave the room.
Me too. See ya.
Courtney Lane is located off of Middle Haddon Road, and it is a street with houses, relatively new in the last 20 years, I would say. And when the developer started the building, he was required to, excuse me, he was required to put up a bond, so in case something should happen and he was unable to finish the work, we would have a bond to call to finish the work ourselves. There's also a small amount of money, less than the bonded money. Let's see. The cash bonds is the lower amount. Is that right, Tom?
Cash is lower.
And the passbook of bond is really for the driveway.
The time is now 7:45. The Portland Library will be closing in 15 minutes.
Excuse me, I meant the street. It's a dead-end street.
Drop the street, that's the great bond.
For the street. However, because the work is being done in 2016, and the project started many years ago, we feel that the money that this bond and the cash bond will give us will not be 100 percent what we need to spend for the street. And the remaining amount will be taken likely from Town Aid Road, which is a grant that we get from the state to take care of our roads. Now, Courtney Lane is in relatively good shape. I have looked at it. I've driven on it. The developer did put down everything, I believe, except the top coat. He has been maintaining the street at his own expense since he started the project. So we have not been plowing it because it's a private property until it is accepted by the town. However, our attorneys tell us that by calling the bond, both the cash and the passbook, we will be able to utilize that money to then complete the work, which would be the top coat and any other residual work that needs to be done, to make this a town-accepted road, which then comes to the Board of Selectmen, because the Board of Selectmen have the authority by the charter to accept roads. The road we plan to have in compliance with the road regulations as established by the town, and it will be eligible to be accepted by you. But before we get to that point, we want to complete the road using these bonds, and we're bringing this information to you so that you can approve us calling the passbook bond and the cash bond. I think I'm going to read this into the record so that people will hear. This is a resolution, May 4th, 2016, regarding calling the passbook bond for completion of Courtney Lane. Whereas the town of Portland, acting by its Planning and Zoning Commission, issued subdivision approvals to Harmon Property Development for a phased subdivision development, application number 98-35 dated 7/15/99, and 00-33, which was dated June 21st, 2001, to be located on Courtney Lane in the town of Portland. And whereas, as a condition of that subdivision approval, the applicant was required to improve Courtney Lane to town standards and to bond for the completion of that roadwork. And whereas in conjunction with subdivision, Harmon posted a bond in a passbook savings account, now held by First Niagara Bank, in an amount that now totals approximately $23,416.80. And whereas pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8-26(c), all work associated with the subdivision plan approved on or after October 1, 1997, must be completed within five years. Yeah. That, that's under the statutes? 1977? Is that right? In other words, if any plan was approved on or after that date, it must be completed within five years. And there was the deadline for this particular project of July 15, 2004, and the deadline for completion of Phase 2 was June 21, 2006. And no extension of these deadlines was requested of or received by the commission or filed with the town clerk. And whereas based upon information and belief that no additional site work has been performed on either Phase 1 or Phase 2 of the subdivision since June 21, 2006, and all lots for these phases have been sold. And whereas the town is obligated pursuant to the Connecticut General Statute 8-26(c) to call the bond to complete the bonded work. And whereas estimates to complete the bonded work have been received, and the cost to the town to complete the bonded work will exceed the amount of the bond. Now therefore be it resolved, the town of Portland hereby call the entire bond on said subdivision to complete the bonded work required to serve the subdivision lots. So just a little bit of iteration. What this is saying is when the subdivision was approved, they, the developer was required to complete all of the work within five years of the permit. And you can see that of the two permits that were issued, they have, the developer has exceeded that deadline. So that is a reason for the town to call the bond. If it was within the five years, it would be perhaps inappropriate because the developer would be able to have that five-year time period within his permit. But no extensions have been given, so no work has been done since the date stated in the resolution. So it seems appropriate that we would proceed to complete the road so that the residents on the road will have a town road. Once it is approved by you after the work is performed, then we will take care of it, and we will plow it, and we will maintain the road, just as we do every other town-accepted road in the town. And that was the requirement and the understanding of all the people that bought into that street, that this would become of the standard of a town-owned road, which is a much higher standard than a private road would be. So, questions? Kitch?
Susan, first of all, my biggest question, my most important question is, why has it taken so long to call the bond? I mean, we're 10 years out.
Well, I think we were hopeful that the developer would be able to complete the road. He has been maintaining it, and he has been plowing it and taking care of it. And by virtue of doing that, we have not had to do the plowing, and we have not had to make any repairs. Could we have called it sooner? Yes. Yes, we certainly could, and it's been a long time. One of the reasons that this has also come up is that there is some land on that road.
That was going to be my second question.
That another person has purchased, and he has approached the town and said that as time goes on, he would like the opportunity to develop that land. And as we know, you can't develop land if it's not on frontage of a town road. So that individual would not be able to easily develop his land. There might be another way, in the backyards, to get an access, but to be practical, this particular person said, and it's not anybody in this room.
Okay.
That particular person would like to have the opportunity available to him to develop his land. And you can't do it if you're not on a town-owned road. It's not one of Mr. Harmon's lands anymore. Am I right, Tom? You don't know, right?
So let me ask this then. If there's interest in developing another site on the road, would we finish the road before that developer began his work?
Yes.
Would that developer then be responsible for any damage done to the certified town road?
Typically, they would be under the requirements to have bonds for their work.
So we'd have a same situation?
I don't know that they would be bonded for the road, Kitch, but they would be bonded for the work that they do, based on whatever the Planning and Zoning Commission determines is appropriate. So as you do your work, there's requirements within the zoning regulations that you bond certain aspects of your work. If they were to damage the road, I don't, I don't know clearly if the, if the bond would cover that. What I do know is this occurs often. I mean, people do develop along a town-owned road.
Yeah, any damage done, any road, there's a number of town roads leading up to this road to the, you can't damage roads. So no, we wouldn't be bonding for that because that's not the activity they're proposing, but if they did damage it and they were, you know.
They'd be liable.
Yeah.
They'd be liable. Okay.
That's insurance.
Well, as a practical matter, how does that ever work?
Yeah.
It doesn't.
Well, no, I'll give you an example.
I mean, you see roads that are paved all the time, and then you see the trucks, trailers driving over them every day, and you know that that's what caused the damage.
No, 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 no. It's more when they're offloading an excavator and they spin the machine and they rip the asphalt.
I guess I'm talking about the damage where the heavy trucks are driving over the road and they're causing it.
All trucks are, all roads are supposed to be designed for those so-called heavy trucks.
But they're not.
All roads are supposed to be designed to, to, to.
Well, we're kind of jumping ahead of it, but, but I would suggest that, maybe I should know this, I don't know what development you're talking about, but the level of development, maybe it would make sense not to actually do whatever work you're talking about doing on the road until it's done.
But he can't, he can't.
You can accept it, though, Kitch?
No. You can't accept the road without the top coat and all the rest of the requirements of the roads regulations.
And I'll give you an example, Brian.
The board doesn't have that discretion.
I'm not going to vote for a road that's not road standard.
Yeah, but Brian, I'm.
I understand, but it almost, depending on what kind of development you're talking about, it makes no sense to do it and then have it destroyed.
I think that the land, just because most people don't remember, the land that, there's a few parcels left down there on each side that could have potential, maybe a couple houses or something.
That's what we're talking about?
Yeah. We're not talking about, I don't believe we're talking, right?
It's not huge. No, it's not huge.
We're not talking about new roads and all that. So it would be the same as if somebody wants to put a pool in their backyard, large equipment needs to be moved in. They have to protect their own driveway, they have to protect the town road. There's nothing different here, in my opinion, you know. But I, I don't want you to go down a road where there's going to be new roads being put out. I don't think that's supposed to be.
We do this all the time. I think, I mean, there's properties that are being developed all the time, along Main Street, along Culver Hill Road, Middle Haddon Road. People build houses. And we don't not finish a road because they might damage it. I mean, if we finish a road.
I guess I'm just speaking logically, I guess. I suppose depending, if you're going to do the work, and you know it's coming, if you can accept that, do the work after they.
He may never, he may never develop it.
And it's not just a he, they're both sides. The other side is owned by another family, and they could potentially develop.
And it's their right to be able to develop their land, and in order to do that, they have to have frontage on a town-owned road. Thank you.
I could quibble with that, I suppose, but sure. I mean, they own the property. It's not a town road yet, so.
You can't get it accepted by planning zone. If you don't have frontage on a town road.
Right.
Except if you were, as this case was, the developer had a site plan in place. He promised that he would build the road, and it would meet the high standards of a town-accepted road. Then he can go in and do all his work, and then when he's done, the road is accepted by the town. We did this a few years ago with Mashamasik. Remember, we accepted Mashamasik? There's still, I would say.
If that work was done, right?
Lots that still have to be done.
Yeah.
Lots, excuse me, lots that will still be developed, but the developer finished his town-accepted road previous to all the lots being developed, so that he no longer would have to plow and maintain the road. These roads, as you know, are very expensive to build, and once the development is near to completion, there may be a few lots that aren't sold, there may be a lot that is sold, but the owner doesn't have the interest at the present time to develop it. That doesn't mean you wouldn't, you wouldn't make the road ready for acceptance. I mean, there are people on what that town-owned road.
I understand, but the distinction between the two of those is that he did what was required, and it was accepted, and what was required in this case was not done.
But just for clarification too, any lot of record can be developed, it's when it comes down to splitting it. So in other words, if either one of these people on that road wanted to have increased the number of lots, that's when this would come into play. A lot of record could be developed, but regardless.
The road should be.
Exactly. Back to the point, Kitch hit it with her first comment. It's been 10 years that we've had the ability to pull this, and I would only point out, well, maybe, you said that all the, well, first of all, two questions. One, how much is the difference? In other words, what are our guest made?
I'm going to ask finance for that because I think he has that number.
I'm not going to, I'm looking for ballpark here. I know it could be, unless you have a solid number for it.
I thought it was around, off the top of my head, I thought it was like 10 or 12.
Difference.
Thousand difference.
Okay, so.
So I mean, the main crux of what we're trying to do here, obviously, is the bank requires us to pass these resolutions to get the money. And, you know, there's money out there. The state contractor's giving us a price, good price. They've given us a slot for the schedule. Need to get this, need to get these two resolutions passed. Need to do some work with the bank. Bank's got to give us the money and get this turned around so that we can get the top coats on and get the road improved to your standard, and then we can go accept the whole road from, from Mr. Harmon's development property. But I mean, like I said, at this point, you know, for whatever reason, it's come into the closure of, of the idea, and it needs to get accomplished sooner than later.
So maybe around 40,000 or something?
I guess my next question, whatever happened with, at one point, we tried to sell the road that went up for a tax auction. Whatever happened with the disposition of what was owed on that, where is that money?
Anything that would have been.
Assessed against it. I don't want to.
Yeah, yeah, there was amounts owed. I believe that, do you have that information?
It was about 8,000.
Click queam, I think we're click, quit claiming that property to us, is the way I think that was supposedly worked out. And then that, that component is not taxable anymore.
Yeah, I personally don't believe the road should have been taxed in any way. I don't, I think that may have.
It's legal, but it seems inappropriate.
We shouldn't have probably ta, we shouldn't have ever taxed it. It just got to the point where.
You can't tax it.
Right, because that just.
That was odd.
Yeah, you shouldn't, I don't believe, if a road is going to be turned over to the town, I don't believe we should be taxing it, and then they could just walk away at a tax sale, then we're really all, you know.
Yeah, that was a, not the best one.
We usually don't get overly involved in the whole development, it's planning and zoning, as we all know. However, because this involves one of the selectmen's duties, which is to accept or discontinue or abandon roads, that's one of your authorities. So what we are attempting to do here is call the bonds and utilize that money along with other road dollars to get a standard that is acceptable under our road regulations, and then it will come back to you for approval. And then, given with the top coat and the improvements in that road, it will be easier for the town trucks to plow it. Now, the town trucks are bigger and heavier, and the developer was using his smaller trucks, I presume, to clear it and had been maintaining it. So we've saved a little bit of money along the way, not having to plow it, but at this point, we need to accept the road and be done with this particular project.
I guess, I guess my only, my last comment would be, I know you said that 12,000 difference would come out of the road fund, is that what I heard? Town aid fund? I would just put it out there that had we pulled this bond maybe a little sooner, and I believe that would probably be the responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Department to tell us when to pull it. I would say you split this and take half out of their funding, out of Planning and Zoning, and half out of road fund because, you know, arguably, this number kept growing over time, too.
It's more Public Works Department that is responsible for road acceptance. So I'm not suggesting that the money come out of the Public Works Department because Town Aid Road money is part of the money that we use to maintain roads.
Although, the motion doesn't even deal with that, right?
No, no. That's information, I want to tell you this. I'm trying to disclose information. But the, the resolution is regarding calling the passbook bond for completion of Courtney Lane. I mean, there's, there's a lot of other chapters to this story that I'd be happy to share at another time, but it would not be relevant to this particular resolution.
So we're simply calling the bonds, and then we go from? So we're simply calling the bonds and then we go from there and deal with it from there. So I move that we adopt the both resolutions.
Waive the reading of the second?
Waive the reading.
So would you mind doing it separately, Brian?
Sure, I move adoption of the resolution.
Passbook bond for completion of Courtney Lane?
Sure, regarding calling the passbook bond for completion of Courtney Lane, waive the reading.
I'll second that. Okay. Tom, do you have a question?
You just have a reverse intention intended to say hello.
So the green one has to be accepted first, okay.
I move adoption of the green resolution.
Okay. And I will point out, there is a Scrivner's error on the third paragraph. It says Harmon posted toe, it should be two in cash. Thank you, Kathy. So the resolution is regarding calling the cash bonds for completion of Courtney Lane. Motion's been made by Brian, I think it was seconded by Kathy. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Second, Brian?
I move adoption of the resolution regarding calling the passbook bond for completion of Courtney Lane, waive the reading.
Seconded by Kathy. Any further discussion? Kitch?
I would just like to have on the record that I think we need to be more diligent in binding and sticking with deadlines that are in place so that we don't end up in a situation like this again.
Thank you. So noted in the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Monthly budget report. And you do have in front of you revenues and expenditures. And Tom would like to highlight some items for you on the fiscal year sixteen budget report dated 4/30/2016.
Hello, all. Don't have too much to say, but go over a few things with y'all. So looking at page one for the revenues. The overall picture between account ten to fourteen is a decent showing in tax collection. Still have some, obviously, in the current year to collect. But we were over on prior and I think that has to do with the remainder of those tax sale carryover from last year as well as we were open supplemental over what we expected, so that's also a good thing. We recently received the 2.169 of our education additional cost sharing money. So that's great. We're only not receiving 4,008.72. So that's a definite sigh of relief for us. Still waiting on our school transportation money. Probably won't be the 48,000, but it should be close. And that usually will come in, probably May and June area. State-owned property, like we said, will not come in, that's been cut. The other components, we're on the next, let's see, page three, number, account three twelve. Just wanted to point that out. That's conveyance. Tax is doing very well. Spoke with the town clerk today. Just said that there seemed to be some more sales, more transactions, stronger transactions. So that's a good thing to see. We'll keep watching on our, he's gonna keep watching the recording fees to see if we can bring that up by the end of the year, but not doing too bad. So definitely if one washes the other out, that's a good thing for the budget. Three twenty-four is police, private duty. That is, will, it's been doing well, but I'm sure we'll pick right back up again now that the warmer weather is upon us. There's usually a lot more activity in the May-June time. And on three twenty-eight, the permits are doing, permits are doing well. And, you know, moving to expenses here. And a couple of highlights, a couple of areas that's highlighted. And it's been, it's the same thing, I sound like a broken record, but on page four, the town council. We've got a lot of current activities with our county council going on for events and things that we're trying to get accomplished and activities. There was a lot of planning matters that we've touched upon before that had planning and development matters and planning and commission matters and all that type of good stuff. So we have April, May, and June. Obviously, we'll be over, we'll need to give an influx into that account. But we'll continue to watch it and monitor it. But we only use our lawyers as needed, so they're, it's a need as we go along. On page five is technology. The budget overall is doing good. We always have to watch for overtime. But that's another area where it's usually on call-in basis, based on alarms, late night issues, computer problems, where networks are down on weekends and twenty-four-hour operation, things of that nature where they need to come in and resolve it. So we watch it, but there's, that's, we watch that. Vehicle maintenance is always a area. That is thirty-three, oh thirty-three on page ten. It's always an area that we have a concern as, but we have some encumbrances out there. Some are open encumbrances that we're gonna watch. We'll have to watch that throughout the year. It's over by six thousand now. Not overly too concerned because I do know that some of those are open encumbrances and hopefully they won't be utilized. But there is a possibility of some need of influx there by the end. On page thirty-seven, we have building maintenance. Doing quite well, accepting the equipment, supplies and building supplies. And that's, we always have that issue generally. We've tried to give them more, but it's hard with the budget, so we try to watch and monitor by using transfers if we need to switch items in. There has been some of the senior center work to connect the generator, the standby generator, that the Board of Ed, we did, we rolled fiber for them and buried it. Our department and the Board of Ed was gonna come back and help on doing some of those connections. So they have started doing that at the senior center. So there's probably a good, maybe two to three thousand dollars in building supplies in that number there, just alone. So, and then I know they did a lot of painting earlier in the year. So those are some good areas. But oh forty-two and oh forty-four are on page thirteen and the smaller budgets. It's just weird things like the midstate planning that you came back and there was, they had increased the fee that we didn't notice. So that one, we'll just watch. I mean, it's again, it's sixteen hundred dollars. It's just a clerk. It'll, by six hundred, seven hundred dollars left in the fund, it'll probably go over by a slight amount, but not anything significant that's a concern. But we'll have to transfer money in probably. Same thing with inland-wetland. The enforcement officers already gone over. That's probably a good thing. That usually means that there's more activity going on and more development when the inland-wetlands officer is involved. So some of those things, when you have the town engineer and he's heavily involved, sometimes legal. Sometimes those things are all good things on the revenue side, bad on the expense side. But the net overall is a good situation. Then there was a, just for, in the budget, we had in oh eighty-five, there's a ten thousand dollar savings in capital leases. What happened there is in our capital lease that we had last, last year, we had that lease going on. The payment was due in May. There were savings that we had underspent the lease based on savings when we did bidding. And so we were able to take that excess, pay down a principal, pay down that amount as well as pay the first payment. And so therefore, the, was a nice, part of that lease is they actually renegotiated the whole principal and interest, which is very unusual, but they gave that and they restructured the whole lease on a downward after the principal payment went in. And so that was, that amounted to about a ten thousand dollar savings in this year. So that was a nice aspect of the lease. That's what I got. Thank you.
Tom, you know, this is not a large amount, but the five thousand dollars for the one hundred seventy-fifth anniversary, that hasn't been taken out of contingency yet, correct?
Some of the expenditures, I guess.
Some of the expenditures, but they haven't expended the full five thousand. What will likely happen is that they will not expend all of their dollars for this fiscal year. So you may need, depending on what else they need to do, you may need to give them something out of next year's money.
Yeah, because the way that we did that, instead of, you know, the way that was approved was approved of use of contingency. So they've brought in some miscellaneous revenue, almost offsetting or even maybe more than what they've spent so far. But that's gonna go in as miscellaneous revenue into fund balance. This'll go in as expenses as they expend their items. So they're very good, I mean, there definitely will be, they'll definitely come back next year and say, hey, we need...
For the parade.
Whatever, for the parade. And then that'll, you know, in theory, so far, I think they've actually made money at this point. So that's a good thing.
How do they make money? I had a curiosity.
They've got baskets that they're selling.
They're selling a lot of it, yeah. So instead of doing transfers out of that fund, we didn't do that, we just left it all in the general fund. So thus, next year, you'll probably need to allocate some out of contingency for that.
I feel confident as long as you're keeping track.
Yep. Anything else? Okay, when we're ready, we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Don't think there are many, no? Refunds of excess payments, Brian?
The town refund the sum of five twenty-five fifty-four and four ninety-six fifty-six, which totals one thousand twenty-two ten. Pamela Wilcox-Dapkus and Michael Dapkus.
Seconded by Kathy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. I don't have any committee status reports. Public comment? Shirley Olson?
It's not a comment, it's a question. In relation to Harmon, you know, that was started so long ago, has it changed? Is it the same, is it the original Harmon? Because Harmon developed Wellwood Drive a long, long time ago. So I'm just wondering if it's the same.
I'm not sure if it's the same company, it's the same family.
It's the son. Does that have an effect, though, on the issue with the bonds? That's my question.
It's the LLC, it's not the person.
Sorry?
It's the LLC, not the person.
Oh, okay. I need, I need that information. Thank you, Tom. Informal discussion. I did want to let you know that likely the next meeting, we're, will be going into negotiations with the Brownstone Exploration Discovery Park. Their contract has been in place since two thousand and six. And there are some items in the contract that will need to be revised. And I will be giving a draft to the selectmen so that we can begin to look at it. And there are some items within there. I believe we can do this in executive session, but I will double-check that. If we can't, we'll do it in public session. But I did wanna let you know, it's something we've been working on for actually about a year. And it has to do with some of the specifics associated with their operation. One of the reasons we want to look at this is they're very interested in potential expansion of their operations and their business. And how that's done may not be possible within the given contract, particularly as they go and discover other revenue sources or investments. So we need to take a look at that and I'll bring that to the meeting. I believe it's seventeen, I don't know what the date is.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth of May. And I... Go ahead, sure.
There's somewhat of an issue in Proust Acres in relation to the exploration park in relation to traffic not come, not going down Middlesex Avenue, but rather going down Russell Avenue and taking a right into the area that's... It's a cul-de-sac down there, basically, except you can go around braces. And right there, just after you go over the home, there's like seven children that play within three homes. That doesn't include the others that their houses, you know, back up those houses. And I had a random thought that perhaps there is a sign in relation to the exploration park on Route nine. Would it be possible to put a sign at the end of the bridge saying to make right-hand turn for the exploration park? And then they'd be right there for parking.
We did ask a few years ago, Shirley, and the state was loathe to put any signs on the bridge. They will not allow us to put signs on the bridge. Because we did ask them. That's their property. Even right at the end, that's state property. They don't, we had to get actually an act of, a special act of the legislature to get those signs on the bridge, on the Route nine and the sign that's on Route seventeen A. We had our legislator actually put in a special act and they don't put signs up.
No, but, you know, it's a pretty dangerous situation.
We can address it?
Because people who don't know the area come flying down the road. It's different with the people who live in your own neighborhood. You know where a little kid's gonna pull out of, but if you're not familiar with the area, you don't know where some little kid is after come flying out.
No, signage does need to be improved and I will work with Shirley.
I think we need that little thing, too, after the exploration.
So they're missing the sign that says select on Middlesex Avenue. Isn't there a sign there somewhere?
It's a very small sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Need something bigger, maybe there.
But I think in relation to that sign, this is, you see the sign and it's like two lanes there?
Right, you can't get all, yes.
You can have major immediate left on Middlesex Avenue.
So they're going to the next block.
They're going the next block and then they make a right instead of a left. And it's a very dangerous situation.
The sign on Route nine possibly adding right on Lower Main, one sentence. On the Route nine sign, right on Lower Main. That way, everybody's reading Brownstone Park, right on Lower Main. Kind of giving, I see what you're saying, giving them...
A warning, yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe it can't be done. I don't know if the legislature has to...
It can be, it can definitely be improved and we need to do so.
So maybe that could be part of the discussion we have.
Yeah. Absolutely. It's a good suggestion.
I don't wanna be the one to call, why don't I get the way in on the road?
No, 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 no. Good point. And as I also indicated, we will talk about the fracking waste on the eighteenth. And I don't have anything else in particular for that meeting. So I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Someone, sir, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kitch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.